We on?
Yes.
All right. Welcome to Troy Planning Commission Meeting for January 25th. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Here.
Mayor, yes. Mr. Titterington?
Here.
Mrs. Erlich?
Here.
Mr. Walkie?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Here.
All members are present.
Before us, we have our minutes of our past meeting, January 11. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions in this minutes?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Stands approved. First matter to come before us today, then, would be the downtown Riverfront overlay district for 702 West Franklin Street. Staff have a report that they want to give.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Excuse me. It's on top of the table right now, I guess. So, you can still give your report and then we'll talk about it. Go ahead.
So, this is the split the parcel into three separate lots to lot four, three single dwellings. The proposed front yard setback is nine feet, side yard setback is five feet, and a 15-foot rear yard setback. The portions of the code that do not meet have been outlined in the staff report. I've also provided a map to show all the properties that have existing non-conformities where the lot width does not currently meet zoning code requirements for the R6. So, as you can see, in the immediate vicinity, there's a multitude of properties that be consistent in terms of lot width. Really where this DRO request is geared towards is a smaller rear yard setback. And that'll conclude my staff report.
Okay. Before we get our discussion, is there a motion to take it off the table?
Second.
Please call the roll. Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Okay. Any questions of staff on this matter?
If you have a question, are they bringing this back at some point? Or is it just tabled indefinitely?
We just took it off the table.
Took it off?
It's now. It's now or just?
So, it's just done?
No. We're reading the newspaper here. It's up for discussion. It'll still have to go through the zoning permit process, but this is for these purposes. Did you make a motion? Did you want to make a motion? Or anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Or to recommend it make a positive recommendation, counsel.
I'll second.
Motion seconded. Any further discussion?
I do have a question. If council doesn't take an action, then it is approved. Is that correct?
That's correct. Okay. There's a motion, support for the motion, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Next, we have an issue with dedication of a right-of-way. Staff have a report.
Yes, sir. This attacks as a copy of the dedication of a right-of-way and a five-foot utility easement. The easement portion is not for the planning commission discussion. This is primarily to dedicate a 0.067 acres of in-lot 100574. A potential development led to this request. So, again, the five-foot utility easement is not for the discussion. And the replat has been reviewed by the city engineer, and staff is requesting that planning commission make a recommendation to city council to dedicate the 0.06 acres of in-lot 100574 as a right-of-way.
Include my report. Questions of staff? Action be taken by the commission?
I'll move to approve.
Is that a motion for a positive recommendation, counsel?
Positive recommendations.
Is there support for that motion?
Second.
Mr. McGary? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Approved.
Next, we have historic dislocation for a strategic appropriateness. Staff have a report.
Yes, sir. The applicant addresses requesting approval for replacement of four attic dormer windows located at 235 South Market. The property is located within the B3 central business district. He's requesting removal and replacement of the existing windows in the attic dormers. He's replacing them with Radiance Plus Model 4600 double hung colonial grid windows. They are divided in the six grids which match the existing window design. Staff recommends approval for the proposed windows. They are appropriate in design, scale, and color to the building, and the replacements in the windows are similar in design to the current windows.
Any questions of staff?
This is where you're calling and signing?
No, I just saw that. It should be windows.
Okay.
The proposed window replacement.
Any other questions of staff? Commission want to take any action?
Move for approval.
Second.
Is there motion support? Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Approved.
Next, the review of historic preservation overlay design manual update. I understand you talked about this a couple times. You want to take another gander at it?
Yes. So, that was last meeting. You were given the design manual with the track changes from a couple of planning commission members. Included is a copy of the letter of support from Troy Main Street's executive director. I've also hinted out at today's meeting, the QR code, two examples and the percentage of window area for our discussion. The MISO temporary window sign is going to be temporary. That's supposed to be gone within 28 days, but that's one example of the QR code that we currently have. And then, four-acre clothing company is a permanent window signage. And then, their QR code is about 24% of the window sign. But keep in mind, that seems a little high, but it's only a four-square-feet window sign. So, one example is 5% of the window sign area, and the other example is 24%.
In both examples, you have dimensions there, so we could do that route also. Not exceeding six inches square or something like that if we wanted to?
We could. The challenge with that though is every window pane is different. So, if we put a dimension threshold on it, it might make it challenging. If the window is bigger, it might make it extremely small. So, I think having a percentage will help scale it down to the individual panes.
Well, if we were, for instance, on the first alternative, and I know I'm skipping ahead, I'm sorry, but if we went with the first alternative and said, okay, your QR code can't exceed 5% of the window sign, and we use that on the second alternative, that would be a very miniscule, tiny area.
Well, so, they were allowed a greater window sign than the four-square feet, but they separated their total signage allowable based on their building signs and window signs.
I don't think you're getting the point. To Mr. Cappers' point, if you look at number one, if you look at the MISO's temporary sign, do we want a QR code that could be 24% of the window sign if you use the second one, the four-acre, as an example? 24% may be appropriate when you're looking at four-acre size sign, but 25% of a much larger sign than MISO, that's why I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that a percentage probably doesn't work unless you're going to have some sophisticated chart that says if you have something this big, you can have X percent. If you have something this big, well, then the percentage goes down.
For instance, if we were to say that QR codes have to be a maximum of six by six inches, okay? If we went that route, that would apply in both these cases. And if they felt that it would be too much for their sign allowance, then they just don't have a QR code.
Correct.
Or a smaller one if they want to. Keep in mind, we're trying to dovetail this in with what a pedestrian would look at, not auto traffic. So, I'm thinking we use some sort of measuring device other than a percentage. Mr. Chair? Yes, Mr. Titterton?
Yeah, I agree. I like the word maximum. If we want it six by six, and that was the maximum amount, that gives some flexibility. And again, these are guidelines, and there's always give and take, but if we set a maximum in there, then we can quote-unquote negotiate from that point.
Okay. Okay. Well, thanks for the information. The way I would like to address this is, I'm sure everybody's read this all the way through and made notes, so I'd like to go ahead and go page by page through this, and if you have any comments or questions or changes, let's discuss those, okay? I'm going to start on page, I'm going to assume that you'll go back and re-paginate everything after we have our discussions. If there's any paginations to these change. So, let's go ahead and go to page seven, introduction. And everybody has the redline version, right? So, we'll see that there were some changes made. Are there any other changes on page seven? Any other comments? Okay, moving to page eight. This is where we first started off with that discussion, is the one of the purposes. How did you change that? Did you see the purpose clause underneath the application guidelines? We talked about last time about incorporating a number of different purposes.
I was. Sorry, am I loading up the track changes?
I think it was on page eight. Is there a page made there?
Oh, no. That picture's correct.
I know. Do you want to reset?
Between the two things, I'm going like crazy. Oh, thank you.
It's not going to stay that way.
Thank you.
You need some sticky tack. I think we identified two or three different areas in here where we could constitute the purpose of these guidelines. And I thought you were going to go ahead and take the purpose clause on page seven and expand it to include those.
It looks like that column was not addressed. So, are you recommending that I remove using the guidelines and combine the purpose and using the guidelines together?
Mr. Chair, do you remember your conversation at the last meeting? Did you not say that you thought maybe they ought to be bullet pointed, like 123?
Is that here or was that in a previous meeting?
I'm sure.
One of the two.
Oh, my bullet points.
Yeah, just taking, you have different paragraphs and different sections to talk about the purpose. And so, combining all of those into that first paragraph, and whether it's bullet point or it's just separate sentences, or if you want a little explanation, put the paragraphs all together.
Basically, just the purpose and then using guidelines, combine that and that.
Well, for instance, the very first sentence of the purpose clause on page seven talks about what you believe the purpose of this document is. And then, you go on to the next page, using the guidelines, and the second paragraph starts out, "The guidelines also offer guidance to ensure new buildings align with the character of the district," which seems to be a different purpose than the first one was set out. And I think I outlined the third time where I thought, oh, here's another.
Well, look at the first paragraph under using guidelines, the intent.
Right.
Isn't intent a synonym of?
Yeah, so I think we combine those two and eliminate some of the redundancy.
Well, there's another.
And then, the application of guidance.
Yeah.
These guidelines provide.
So, it seems that should be all combined in some fashion.
Yes, I will make that change.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on pages seven or eight? I'm sorry. Somebody said something, okay? Ten? Eleven. On page 11, we caught that his name was Asa Coleman in the one location. Well, there's another location there where you say Dr. Ada's suspicion. It's Asa, Ada S.A.
Correct.
Asa Coleman.
But is it Coleman C.O.L.E.? Was it C.O.L.?
That I don't know.
It's Coleman Salmon, right?
I think it's C.O.L.E. I think that's correct.
I will accept that.
That's the first name, it's the last name.
Right. And as our illustrious clerk also pointed out, we might want to put Dr. Coleman's last name there after Asa, et cetera. Thank you for your service.
You're welcome. Be done.
Anything on page 11? Page 12? Page 13? Page 14? Let's roll along here. Page 15? I enjoyed the old picture. Page 18? 20? Page 21? Page 22? Page 23? Page 24? Page 25? Page 26? Somewhere in here, I thought it was on page 26, but why not? You said it was changed because of a conversation with the owner. Do you recall that?
Yes.
Why is that in here?
We had received a request from a building owner about reducing the storefront, which the storefront is critical for, in terms of transparency and scale to the surrounding street state, so that sparked my idea of adding that into a design manual.
Okay. Is this, talking to one building owner and saying, okay, yeah, we'll take care of that in the building design manual, you took a look at it in the overall scenario, right?
Correct.
Was this good for the owner?
Correct.
Page 29? Page 30? 31, 32? Page 33? Page 34? Okay, now, this is where we start with the issue concerning the QR codes. That would be in paragraph 5.0C. Graphics and messages should be simple and clear, avoiding phone numbers and web addresses. Do we need to include, if we like QR codes, do we need to include that in here, or is that elsewhere?
It would be included here. We can add.
Should not exceed.
Should not exceed six inches by six inches.
Okay.
And are we looking to QR codes being a component of a more comprehensive sign, or are we okay with those being standalone signs?
We're okay with them being standalone signs. If we're eliminating the six by six inches, it's one square feet.
So, that would be going here. Okay. Mr. Walkie, thanks for bringing that up to our attention as that's how it's acting.
Yes.
Okay, anything else on page 35? And 41? Anybody else have any questions or concerns?
I believe for the record, we've established that these provisions are recommendations and not mandates.
Not at all.
But guideline.
Guideline, yeah. Before we adopt these, if it's okay with that right here, I'd like to go ahead and have you take the redline version we all received, accept those changes. So, we've got all the stuff that we had there gone, then add what we added today as a redline and give it back to us so we can prove it if it needs to be.
Perfect.
Okay?
Yep.
That would be all approved and we don't have to look at it again.
Perfect.
Okay? All right. Anything else on the overlay design manual? Okay. I guess you have some other things you want to talk about. Before I get into that, there's a line from a song. It's Jesus Christ Superstar, their rock opera, that says, "What's the bugs? Tell me what's happening." So, tell me what's happened.
Kennedy.
Okay, well, let it be. Go ahead, Seth.
All right, thank you. In talking with the planning commission, I always ask you guys, you know, what is your relationship like with the city council? And I keep hearing from you guys, it is one-sided, where you're always making recommendations to them, and they don't reciprocate. Well, today, that has changed. So, what has happened is, city council had prioritized urban beekeeping. We held two meetings with them. We held one on January 9th with the Safety and Health Council Committee, where we discussed, I included a memo with some research and a survey, where we discussed different items such as ecosystems, swarming, colonization, things of that nature. We did receive a lot of input from citizens. We also reached out to the Miami County, or the Ohio State Extension Office, Miami Valley Beekeepers Association, and the Miami County Apari Inspector to obtain some further information and get clarification for an ordinance recommendation. And then, at the January 23rd Safety and Health Council Committee meeting, we included those items in the form of a recommendation for legislation, and city council, the council committee recommended approval of that with the contingency that planning commission provides a recommendation to them. So, it's kind of untraditional, where usually we start with the planning commission for zoning code changes. This one started at the council level, was pushed down to you with the contingency. So, urban beekeeping, what was proposed by?
Pushed down.
Pushed down, yes. Sorry. Yeah, well, you know.
We were so sad about our.
So, what essentially this would do is, it would permit urban beekeeping as an accessory use in the zoning code. So, it would be secondary use, similar to a fence, a shed, things of that nature, where it would be permitted. We looked at permitting it in various districts, and ultimately, we decided to permit it in all single-family residential districts, minus the R5 district, which is the most dense district we have for single-family residential. So, from the R4 district, R4, R3, R2, R1, they would be permitted, and with the following conditions, a maximum of two hives would be permitted in those areas. Hives would have to be set back in the rear yards. They would have to establish things such as dense vegetation. They would have to provide adequate water supply within 15 feet of where the bees are kept. The hive will have to face the principal structure. That way, it has them coming in from the house side and not the rear of the lot side. The owner of the hive must be a resident on the dwelling unit where the hives are kept. We did put some provisions in there about the types of frames and the sizes. We put no more than three supers, which is where you keep the honey on those. And then, we talked about how they should be registered with, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, and some other things such as beekeeping equipment shall be maintained in good condition, and the city reserves the right to revoke beekeeping privileges if conditions warrant that type of use. So, as discussed, we met with Miami Valley Beekeepers, implemented those suggestions in there. We made sure that the Miami County Apari Inspector could handle any additional workload of inspections, which he said he could do. And because of that, we made a positive recommendation to city council, who council has made, a council committee has made a recommendation to you for a recommendation to them in the form of a positive. So, very, very untraditional, like, but there's two actions that would have to be taken should you choose. One would be whether or not to hold a public hearing on the zoning code changes, and two would be a recommendation which we would support.
Mr. Chair, this is very unconventional. This is not the typical process, only because it was brought to us by a council member, a constituent who happens to be in the audience. And so, it started out as a broad discussion. There was a follow-up meeting that morphed into a committee report, and that's why it's now coming back, because it is a zoning code change.
Well, let's deal with the first issue first. Do we want to have a public hearing?
I will let you know this. We were not recommending a public hearing because we have had this at two public meetings at the council level. That was our recommendation, of course.
And there will be an official one as part of the zoning.
Yep, at the council level.
Make a motion that we not have a public hearing. Any further discussion? Keep in mind, affirmative vote is not to have a public hearing. Please call the roll.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
Yes.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Commission will not hold a public hearing.
Okay, let's pepper staff now with a bunch of questions.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Walkie?
I would note that on November the 7th, you sent a communication to council saying that the negatives outweigh the positives. And then, you say, if we do it, there are a number of conditions, and each time you use the word "shall." Now, you're recommending that apparently the positives outweigh the negatives, and instead of "shall," you use "should."
For several reasons. One, when I wrote it "shall," that was more of the ordinance-type language, and what we were presenting was information for a discussion. So, it was recommended in my second memo that I alter the words from "shall" to "should" because it is not in legislation form. It was for the form of a discussion to the Health, Safety, and Health Committee.
And some of the thinking on pros versus cons, you know, there were a lot of questions that were answered at that first committee meeting that I think alleviated staff's concerns in a lot of ways, and that's why the initial memo is, the November memo is so much different than the final recommendation. Well, the November memo is also much more conservative than the current recommendation. For instance, you're saying in the current recommendation that the hive should be located only within the rear yard, setback at least five feet from your lot line, whereas in your November, November memo, it says within rear yards at least 30 feet from a budding property line. That's a big difference.
It's a big difference, and that came about through the process, especially with the Miami County Apari. especially with the Miami County Aparie Inspector and reaching out to the Ohio State Extension with some information they provided us as far as the behavior of bees. And they felt that that requirement was overly restrictive, that five feet would suffice. They also have to implement things such as the barrier, water, things of that nature. So we did relax a lot of our previous concerns. I think those were addressed with that education that we received from those other entities.
So I'm very, rarely, in my opinion, does city council go ahead and promote this new type of legislation. You told me that somebody had a constituent and they brought it to the attention.
That's correct.
That's where we found out who had the bee in their body. Okay. Any other questions of staff?
Question. So when you do the ordinance, is that, will the "should" be changed to "shall"?
Yeah, it will be up to grant, but it most likely will be "shall" and not "should," which were conversation topics and not legislation. That's the way I kind of wrote it originally.
I had the same question that you did, Larry. Because I'm worried about the African bees that says "should not be kept."
Those will be "shall," yes.
Okay, thanks.
How big of an issue is this within the city office?
Currently?
Yeah.
It has not been an issue. We don't allow them currently, only in the agricultural districts.
Why is it an issue now to take it out of the agricultural district?
It was a recommendation by council, I think, with some progress in beekeeping, especially with behaviors, kind of this trend in urban agricultural, it kind of led to this. We did research, I think in your packet, there's a survey of communities. We did model our ordinance, or will be modeling our ordinance if it passes, Alpha Bandalia, which we are a Tree City USA, they are a Bee City USA. They were actually the first Bee City USA to do that. So I think the latest trend is what inspired council to bring this forward.
And the intent, and I think you might have meant it this way, right now we allow them in the agricultural district. We have very few parcels in agricultural districts. And so as we got into the denser residential areas, there are several folks that would like to be able to do this in their residential districts, not agriculture. People that are interested in doing this, is this a commercial endeavor for them? Or is this a more recreational hobby?
I think it's more recreational hobby, from what I've been told.
But that brings up a good point.
Go ahead.
If they're selling honey, is there any other requirement?
If it rises to a level of a business, then they get into the business regulations part of the...
Yeah. We do allow for home occupations, things of that nature, where they could obtain a permit. We do allow those in our zoning code currently, if it ever got to that level.
So, Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
If a neighbor complains and something in here is not met, is this going to be you guys that have to go out and see if they have Africanized bees? Or see if they don't have water, or if they don't have...
It would be us. We would probably get the Miami County Aparie Inspector involved as well and ask for his guidance in doing some of the inspections. He is required to do it annually, but he is not limited to doing it annually. My point being is that we could seek advice from the Miami County Aparie, but it would be us going out and looking to make sure they at least meet the bulk requirements.
My dog leaves my yard and bites somebody, then they're going to call the cops. My bees get out and swarm my neighbor, and they're allergic to bees. Who are they going to call?
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with this.
I mean, I've got a guest. I love bees.
We were too, and then we, you know, we had a lot of folks that came out and they talked and, you know... That is a response that we had initially. But in understanding better what bee behavior is like, behavior is like...
Be clear.
It's not... The assumptions are not really the reality when you talk, when you really know how the hobby is and how it's managed and how bee behavior is. I don't care. I'm looking at a hive five feet away from my property line. My grandson comes in and throws a ball over the fence and goes after it right next to the beehive. What's going to be the reaction of that? If you have a fence and have your dog in there, then we're going to know that there's a dog over there. But with these bees and the mobility, my wife's been stung by bees before. I've heard stories of swarms entering your house and having to get rid of them. I'm just really not uncomfortable with this. Let me pose something else to you. If there's a real need for private property to have these hives on, might I suggest a portion of one of our parks? As president of the board of park commissioners, I'll go ahead and lay that out there. We have an area out at Treasure Island, it's five acres, which has a monarch butterfly reserved in it now, that we could go ahead and tuck hives back in the corner. They've got a perpetual water source, being Great Line River. We could do that, similar to what we have in big cities now with plot farming within the cities, you know, where they have the tomato plants and things like that. We could have any people that are interested in apiary go ahead and put their hives out there. And nobody's going to worry about being stung by a neighbor's bees. I'm just throwing that out there. Well, I guess my initial reaction to that is, number one, we'd have to look at any kind of liability that we would take on, and so we'd have to talk to grant about that. There'd probably be an application and a waiver, you know. Well, it'd be difficult to enforce, even if we had a waiver, because it's on public property and people are putting up hives. You know, there would be their own, there would be a different level of enforcement, monitoring, and administration that we'd have to continuously undergo. Second of all, at least if there are confinements of the hives in the rear yard of a neighbor, they're still on private property. And so if there is any kind of incident, then it could be a civil matter, assuming that they've met all the other criteria in our code. Whereas if they're on public property, you're going to, you know... We developed the monarch habitat so that it is available for, you know, bird observation, wildlife observation, gazebo is there now. We have a number of walking path configurations in there. So it's open to the public. And if now you're going to open that to, you're going to introduce a public facility to beekeeping, could that run counter to the green space access that we want to give to our... We also have the flintlands out of Duke Park and it's not being used at all. It'd be a great source of water and fluids. Anyway, what's the rest of the commission want to do?
Well, I've got a kind of a different kind of question. Are the bees the property of the beekeeper?
They are.
Yes. What if the neighbor who doesn't like bees starts hanging out flypaper?
It'd be a civil issue, I guess, if we would not be involved.
It's on their property, I guess.
I guess it'd be no different than you trapping animals that exceed on your property and taking them to the dog pound or animal shelter.
Or for that matter, cutting a limb on a tree on your neighbor's property, but the limb overhangs on your property. You're illegally able to cut that limb at least back to your property.
But that's not legal advice.
Not legal advice, right? It is not legal advice. I am not an attorney, nor do I play one. Thank you for the disclaimer.
Is there a notification given to neighbors? I know we talked about that at the meeting. I don't remember what was decided.
It was recommended by our law director that we do not put that requirement in the ordinance.
Any other questions? Matters for discussion? One quick, when I talk about the wall, or I guess fence, is that just one? How's that wall work? I mean, is it all around the hive, or...
It could be a wall, barrier, fence. You can do several different things.
It's just one side. It could be shrubbery, too.
Yeah, it could be shrubbery, yeah. It could be vegetation as well.
It's just to make sure that they have to go up and they just can't go straight across.
Something with their...
It's where they fly at.
In a way. It's not box forage. It's just one side.
I see Al's point, but also, I mean, if you get into the, this is out of my box a little bit, the need for bees and what they do and all that. It's obviously a good thing for a tree city, too, and all those items. So I don't know that I have an issue, but I see your point, I guess. But that, again, that can happen with a dog. That can happen with a lot of different animals.
I will guarantee you that you have bees in the city of Troy without having this ordinance passed.
I agree, but I don't think you could ever have enough.
And those... About honey-producing hives.
This is addressing the people that ask first. And so we're not aware of hives that are there. Otherwise, we would be enforcing the current code. But in those cases, and we get numerous through the years, through several years, we've had to tell them, "Sorry, you can't keep them because you're in a wrong zoning district."
May I ask, in the previous discussions, was there a high interest? I mean, were there, when you had the public hearings, were there a lot of people in favor and wanting to do this?
Yeah, there was a high attendance from that, specifically from the Miami Valley Beekeepers Association. They have a lot of members. I don't know if I want to speak to their number of members. And I wanted to address something on Alan's point. You talked about having parkland. We've had this issue come up quite a bit in the city over the past years. And a lot of times we've told individuals, "No, you cannot have them because you're not zoned agricultural." For the most part, we've had two of those questions on Dorset Road, and we referred them to the Miami County Parks District, where they did receive permission to put some hives in the parkland, which is zoned agricultural. That is kind of how we solved those two issues. We do get a lot of inquiries about having them throughout the city, I think, which is probably the push that went to city council, was from us constantly saying, "Well, sorry, you can't do this, but you have to go out to agricultural districts." So we did at least have that solution for several cases.
The one gentleman who spoke actually has his hive. He lives in the city limits, but has his hives. I don't know where they're located, but...
Yeah, one hasn't. Yeah, it's out of the county.
If we do this and it just becomes a difficult, bad situation, can we pull back?
The council can always...
Remove it.
Correct.
Or modify it, or... When was the last time that was done? I don't remember. We really don't move progressively in either direction, so it's kind of hard to say.
But that's something I always want to know. When we did the DORA. You know, if the DORA doesn't work, can we remove parts of it? Can we alter it?
Counsel can...
Can we stop it?
This would be part of the code, and council can modify the code. I mean, not to be tongue-in-cheek, Mr. Cappers, but I know that there are other sections of the code that have been visited and revisited by council through the years. None of, can't think of an exact example, but I know it's happened.
I have a procedural question. If we don't provide a positive recommendation, can council... As I recall, it requires a supermajority of council to act.
To override.
On a negative recommendation from the planning commission, yes.
It would.
With nine members, what would that be?
Seven. Six or seven. I'm not sure which.
I feel like it's seven.
Supermajority we're talking about.
Seven.
Seven. It's either two-thirds or three-fourths. Are we saying three-fourths?
I think it's three-fourths.
Well, I'll make a motion to recommend, make a positive recommendation to the council. Let's get it on the table. This motion is second. Any further discussion?
We did the second, please.
Mr. McGary, please, second. Okay, call the roll.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mr. Cappers?
No.
Mr. Westmeyer?
Yes.
Mear?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mrs. Erlich?
Yes.
Mr. Wolke?
Yes.
So the motion is carried.
Positive recommendation of council.
Yes.
Staff have anything else coming for the commission today?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay, good. Anything else for the commission, for the members? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Can we?
Okay. Oh, is it a favor, simply by saying, uh... Opposed? Stay on adjourn. Thank you for your time.